Good afternoon and welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake, meeting of council held March 1st, 2016. We'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Approval of the agenda, it was moved by councillor Morgan and seconded by councillor Kylie. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of March the 1st, 2016 as presented. All in favor? Thank you. Is there any declaration of cunei interest? Councillor Kylie?
Yes, item seven on the agenda by law 16-21. I declare conflict of interest.
Okay.
Family member?
During discussion, you just step back into the one of the chairs, Pat? Thank you. Okay, petitions and delegations, we have from KPMG, Oscar Poloni. And Oscar, you're going to come up and give us an update on our corporate operational review.
Good afternoon, your worship members of council. It's a pleasure to be here today to provide a brief presentation to council for an overview of our corporate operational review of the town of Kirkland Lake. Joining me today, some of you may have met, is Chaz Insalmo. He's a senior manager in our advisory services practice and he's assisting with the review. So, just in terms of today's presentation, we're in Kirkland Lake, obviously. We've been in since Monday. We'll be here tomorrow as well. And we wanted to take the opportunity to meet with council just to talk about the review, talk a bit about the process, the methodology, what we've done and what we're planning to do, and even some of the preliminary findings that we're starting to develop, recognizing your worship and members of council that this is very much early days. So at the end of the day, nothing that we're identifying as opportunities may actually survive the review. It's more than anything else, our perspectives on the town. So, as we've discussed, from a review perspective, we've broken it into a couple of different components, and this builds on the presentation that we made to council earlier this year, where we talk about looking at your municipality from what we call an environmental scan perspective. What do you do? Why do you do it? Where do you spend your money? Where are the staff? What's your service levels? That type of stuff. We do comparative analysis against similar municipalities, recognizing, once again, your worship and members of council, there's no such thing as a perfect comparator, and we know that. We then get into opportunity identification, and then our final report in our presentation. And once again, our timeframes are for the end of April. Based on what we've seen and reflecting the level of cooperation that we've received from your CAO and your staff, no issues from a timing perspective at this standpoint. We expect we're going to have a draft report available end of March, early April for staff review, and then we'll come back to council before the end of April with our final report. In terms of the environmental scan, once again, this is to talk about the current state of the town and to look at your services, your service levels and your delivery methods. And the way that we do this is twofold. We've submitted a fairly hefty information request to your CAO for information concerning the town and its operations. We're going to have a second one that we're going to be providing to you on Thursday, basically looking for additional information. So this is stuff like financial reports, budgets, organizational structures, policies, contracts, that type of stuff as well. What we've also done is we've divided the town's operations into what we call functional teams. And these teams are intended to allow us to interact directly with your staff, to talk about what you do, to talk about how you do it, and as we move through this process, to talk about what you would change, and then ultimately validate the results. And we've basically done everything except for two teams from a consultation perspective. So as you can see, we've divided the municipality into seven teams. Based on how this week has gone, we may look to rejig some of these teams. In at least one instance, we're going to break a team into two. So, from a public works perspective, we may separate that team. Just because of the number of people that are in attendance, it may be easier for us to move it along. And once again, what you'll find is some teams are larger than the others. Our first meeting was with Tech Pioneer Residence. We did that one separately because long-term care in and of itself is very unique, heavily regulated by the ministry. It's a very specialized industry. There's not really similar services to that as well. So, we are continuing our consultation. We do have two sets of meetings set for tomorrow as well. As council is aware, your fire chief is not available tomorrow. He's gone south. So we had the opportunity to meet with him yesterday to discuss fire services as well. From a jurisdictional analysis, this is the comparison. And what we're looking to do is we're looking to see how you fare, recognizing areas of difference may identify opportunities for you to change. So if, for example, you're spending $27,000 per lane kilometer for winter roads maintenance and everybody else is spending $14,000, chances are you're going to want to look at that. We are looking for communities with similar population levels located in Northern Ontario, income and demographics that are consistent with the town. Once again, recognizing there's a lot of things about your community that's unique, including the fact that a bunch of your industrial assessment is actually underground and not taxable. To do this, we will look at financial information returns. We will have interviews with representatives of the communities. We'll be asking for budgets, financial reports, staffing, that type of stuff as well. And based on our discussions with your CAO, there's five communities that we will be looking at from a comparison perspective, and you can see them on the chart. They all have populations and household numbers that are relatively close to yours, recognizing that in Northern Ontario, there's not a lot of municipalities your size. And once again, as we've tried to discuss with council, if we move into Southern Ontario, there are some, but the delineation of responsibilities between counties and lower-tier municipalities really doesn't make for a good comparison. Now, as I've discussed, there are no comparators, so we will need to adjust for differences. And some of the ones that we've identified right now is there are going to be differences between Kirkland Lake and the other comparators in terms of how you finance municipal services. So for example, while you collect and fund water services through water fees, your wastewater costs are funded through the municipal levy. And based on your financial information return, it's not an inconsequential amount. It's in the neighborhood of $1.5 million. Most, if not all, of those comparators on that list fund through user fees. And what that means is, pound for pound and dollar for dollar, all things being equal, your taxes will automatically be higher because you fund through taxes, something that normally other people fund through user fees. What we also noted, and we had a discussion today with respect to solid waste, non-residential garbage collection is a municipal service that's funded through the municipal levy. What you will typically find in your comparators is this is not provided by municipalities, and if it does, it's provided through user fees. So, large multi-unit apartment buildings, downtown commercial cores, hospitals, that type of stuff, typically they use contractors because that's not included in their tax bills. Now, maybe a little difficult to eke out how much of this cost from collection is commercial versus non-commercial, but at the end of the day, it's a difference in your municipality that we are going to have to consider. We've talked about the differences in the assessment components, and this really comes down to the issue of residential versus non-residential taxation. And if you'll recall, what we typically look at is we took, look at your total municipal levy, and it's a bad analogy, but what I say is it's a pizza. And how you split it between residential versus non-residential, how big their slices are, will depend on what your makeup is. You're not capus casing. You don't have a pulp and paper mill in the middle of your town. You're not domtar. You don't have a pulp and paper mill in the middle of your town. All of your assessment from an industrial perspective is generally underground, and in the province of Ontario, that's not taxable. So we need to recognize that even if your municipal levy is the same, because of differences in your residential composition, you'll get that type of split. One of the comparators we're using is Tamiskaming Shores, much more developed commercial base is what we're hearing. So we'll get into that. And once again, underground versus surface operations will change things as well. So, these are things that we will adjust. You can't just come out and say taxes here are X and taxes here are Y because that's overly simple of an analysis. You know, that's not what you're paying me for. The question is, is if I have a difference, how much of it is due to the fact of these differences that you can't control or are structural versus others that may indicate whether you actually have an affordability issue? So, as we've talked about from an opportunities perspective, we break this down into four categories. How can you change your processes to be more efficient and more effective, to get more bang for your buck? How can you reduce your service levels? How could you look at changing your delivery model through what's known as ASD or alternate service delivery? And how can you look at it from a revenue generation perspective? And council, as I've mentioned, this is early days. So, if you hold me to these comments, I'm going to remind you that I told you these are early days and I told you this could change. But these are some of the themes that we're already starting to see. There's not a lot of discretionary spending in this municipality. In terms of money that you spend, most of it is focused on things that you have to spend, not things that you choose to spend. And what's interesting is, you have a daycare. Typically, people will argue that's not a municipal service. You could outsource that to the NPOs. It costs you $60 a year, right? So on an $11 million tax levy, even if you have discretionary program, it is somewhat inconsequential. And it's not, it's not that it's not a lot of money because I don't have $60,000 on me now, but it's not $6 million. So when we look at your discretionary programming, it's the daycare. It's Tech Pioneer Residence. It's things like Heritage North, those types of activities. And once again, we'll go through them and we'll figure out where it goes. The interesting part is, and this is something we always look for, is we count arenas. We count splash pads. We count fire stations. We count public works depots. And there isn't a lot of instances of what we call infrastructure duplication. You know, the fire station in Swastika is basically to hold equipment, a storage facility. It's not actually an operating fire station. You don't have two arenas. You have one public works depot, that type of stuff. What's interesting is I've never been in a municipality that has such a strong focus on using internal resources as opposed to contractors. So when we had the discussions about your public works department and we talked about roads maintenance and what the instances of contractors were, it's mostly equipment rental as opposed to here's a plow route, here's a salt route, here's a sanding route that we use for contractors. So it's a strong focus on internal resources. You know, and for what it's worth, I believe contracting out plays a role in a municipality. I believe that there are instances where you could look at this. Your garbage collection's a perfect example. Not a lot of larger municipalities actually collect their own garbage. They have a tendency to contract out. Recognizing that in some times, contracting out isn't as good as you would think it would be because listen, there's a profit component that's in place. There's a control measure that's in place. So you need to be careful with how you use it, and we'll be looking at it in terms of overtime costs and staffing costs and stuff like that. Across the departments, there is a strong sharing of resources. We had the opportunity to sit in today with, you know, people that were responsible for planning, engineering, building inspection, airport, and what you quickly find is the bodies are being shared across the municipal function. So there's good integration and good sharing of staffing. What's particularly positive from my perspective, and I'm an accountant, so I will apologize, but I have a tendency to get off on numbers, is there's actually thought to how you set your rates. Because oftentimes, what municipalities will do is they'll take their old user fee bylaw and they'll say, okay, we're going to up it by 2% or 3%. When we had a conversation with your community services department in terms of how you set your rate for ice time, you have a targeted recovery percentage. You put a buildup in place. When we talked to Public Works about if you're doing water thawing for frozen services on private property, how do you set the rates? It's the base rate plus a percentage, that type of stuff. So there's some, there's some rigor and there's some mechanism behind it. Now, that said, we may suggest you may want to look at potentially changing things, but at the end of the day, at least your staff are thinking about it. Because oftentimes, what it really comes down to is it's last year plus 2%. It's as simple as that. We haven't done all of our jurisdictional analysis, but I will say, council, that what we've seen so far is that your cost indicators are extremely favorable. You know, you look at your costing in Tech Pioneer Residence, it's probably among the lowest that I've seen in municipal long-term care. When you look at how you run your public works department, it's not what we would consider to be a particularly fat department. Number of operators in your recreation center, which is very nice, by the way, nicely done. It's a great, great facility. We had the chance to walk through it. But, you know, generally speaking, with the exception of a little bit of lag, there's one, there's one operator in the building at any time as opposed to two or three or four. So, what we're seeing is we're seeing that your cost indicators right now are pretty favorable. Now, that is subject to further analysis, so I'll caveat it with it, this is us two days in, and so it may change, but this isn't, we're not seeing signs of bloat or gravy, to use Rob Foran's term, for example. We are finding opportunities. We already have a list right now that we're running. This isn't going to focus predominantly on service level reductions or service eliminations. We'll flag those for you, but I'm pretty sure you're not going to close the residence. And in some practical perspectives, Heritage North, if I could be frank, your worship and council, it's not like you're going to sell it. So what we are going to be looking at is process improvements. How you do work, how things flow through the municipality, how you process activities, right? And it comes down to how do your staff know what to do when they get here in the morning, to what does it take to write a check or get an employee paid? Because there's integrations across departments that frankly, what we can see is can probably benefit from. There are a couple of opportunities that relate to risk mitigation. So what we're seeing is we're seeing instances where your processes may actually leave you exposed to risk. And let me, let me give you an example. You will rent rooms for birthday parties at the Aquatic Centre. You have a form that gets signed, that's a contract, that's a waiver of liability. The issue is, is that contract is signed by the parent who books the room. The other 24 kids in the room may not necessarily be covered by it, so if something happens to them, you're going to run to your waiver. And if I'm the parent, my comment's going to be, that's not my signature, right? So this is, this is cleaning up aspects. There is some opportunity to potentially look at the use of technology. There are some processes that are still being done manually. There are some processes that are being done using Excel. Excel has its benefits and its uses, but the challenge with Excel is if you've got a formula error in it, you're going to have issues. There may be some changes from a service level perspective. You know, the one thing we key on our winter roads maintenance, and the province has the categories, you're running class three, class four, class five roads. It's not like you're maintaining bare pavement policy or having class one roads. Your landfill hours, for example, are the same summer/winter. So the question is, is could you potentially cut back in the wintertime? I don't know. We'll have the discussion. We'll see where it goes. There is some opportunity for revenue generation. And we're still working on it. In some respects, your user fees appear low compared to your peers. In some respects, you may not necessarily be, sorry. Not paying me to lie, council. In some respects, there's some services that you fund through the municipal levy that other places will charge for. And in some respects, how you charge for certain things includes not only covering your operating costs, but covering your capital as well. And making sure that when you're charging for staff, not only are you recovering their hourly rate, but you're also recovering the 35% for the benefits that it costs you as well. In some cases, when you set rates, it's only based on staff time. So if you don't factor in the benefits, there's 35 cents on the dollar you're using. What we find is that in a, in a number of cases from municipalities, they benefit from looking at their policies. And this is what we call the policy environment. So do you have a policy with respect to reserve and reserve funds? Do you have a policy with respect to debt? Do you have a policy with respect to budgeting? Do you have a policy with respect to capital financing? You know, procurement and investment, there's a number of policies that in some cases are here. And then there's other policies, your worship and council, that we would suggest you may want to consider implementing. Why do you do that? Couple of different reasons. One is it ensures consistency across the municipality. So one of the questions that we asked is, if I have a capital project, new computer system, renovation to a building, a repair to an ice plant, a road construction project, what's the policy if I go over budget? At what threshold does a department manager have to report to the CAO? And at what threshold do projects that go over budget have to come to council for approval? And we're still working through it and we have to have the discussion with the CAO, but those are the types of policies we're looking for. And what that ensures is that Public Works has the same operating guidelines as community services, as corporate services. The other reason why we like policy is that in certain cases, what it does is it helps make sure that decisions that are made by the current council continue into future councils. So for example, if you decide you want to have a 1% capital levy where you tack it on to fund infrastructure, and in the time that you're using that levy to build up, you're going to put it into reserves. What would be unfortunate is if a future council comes in and says, ooh, look at all the money, and then they cut the taxes and basically unwind the work. And I'm not saying that's where you want to go. But if you have a policy, what that means is that when future councils come in and try to look at a change of direction, then what they have to do is they have to actually change a policy, which is a lot different than saying, let's take what my municipality did. Let's take $6 million out of reserve to balance the budget. Because all that meant, they did that two years ago, all that meant that this year is they needed $9 million. You know, they froze water rates last year to 0%, and then this year they upped them by 7% or whatever the number is, right? So, good policy makes good business. From an organizational design perspective, you know, let's, let's be practical. This isn't the city of Toronto. You don't have thousands of employees. We have some thoughts with respect to your organizational structure that we'd like to bounce off your CAO. And by and large, council, we call this organizational tweaking. This isn't whole-scale change to your organizational structure because things are in the wrong place or we've got siloing or that type of stuff. It's more fine-tuning than wholesale change. So, so if I may, what we see frankly is from a costing perspective, a staffing perspective, your municipal services, and this will change, council, but your municipal services are likely going to align very favorably to your peers. So the question then becomes one of, and when we look at your services, as I've mentioned, not a lot of discretionary spending, and the discretionary spending that you do do isn't necessarily big numbers. Now, Tech Pioneer Resources Residence is $250,000 a year plus the mortgage. You can't do anything about the loan, right? But the spending, once again, when you look at the level of municipal support for your long-term care home, it's probably half of what we've seen in other municipalities. If it was double, then we'd have a much different discussion. And we can, we can talk about CMIs and all sorts of stuff till I'm blue in the face, but by and large, it looks like you're doing a good job, right? So what this is, is looking at your processes, looking at how you do things, looking at how you charge for things, and in some cases, looking at your service levels. Everybody that I know of has less landfill hours in the winter than the summer, right? And if that's common practice, then why don't you do it, right? So this is, this is the opportunities, right? And, and there are opportunities that are coming up. We're already starting to see them. But by and large, if I was a taxpayer in the town of Kirkland Lake, I'd be happy based on what I've seen right now. Nothing's so perfect it cannot be improved, but you guys actually do a very good job. So, in terms of next steps and this week's, we do have team meetings tomorrow with Economic Development, IT, the Museum and Heritage North, and with Fire and Police. We caught property standards this, this morning because what you'll find is when you're sitting in the room talking with another department and they list what they do, the guy says, well, we do property standards. And we're like, fine, let's talk about property standards. That's how we picked up the airport because we were initially talking about GIS. We do have a meeting with your unions tomorrow to talk about the process, to talk about how we'd like to engage them in the process and to make sure that everybody's on the right page because we find, as I've mentioned, council, this is helpful in people understanding that we're not here with predetermined targets and we're not here to go to war. We're here to respect the collective bargaining agreement. But at the end of the day, we work for the town, and so because of that, we will be looking at changes that impact. And then we'll have meetings with council as well. We've got some interviews scheduled for tomorrow as well. We do have a wrap-up meeting with your CAO at the end of the day just to touch base on how the week has gone and where we're going to go. From a going-forward perspective, as I've mentioned, there is going to be another request for information that we will be flowing to them. We're going to move the comparative analysis forward. We've now got the comparators. We've now got an understanding of your operations, so we can do that. We could have done that without talking to your staff, but if you don't have that insight, then basically you're going blind. We are going to be scheduling the second and third meetings for the functional teams. This round of meetings was intended to confirm our understanding of your operations. The next round of meetings that are going to go towards the end of the month are to talk about what your opportunities are and what will change. We will elicit that from your staff, but we'll also take the opportunity to bounce our ideas off of them. And then the third meeting is to come back in early April and to meet with the teams and to say, okay, this is everything we've seen. This is what we think we're going to suggest to council. Tell me where I'm wrong. And, you know, I will always tell people that I never understand their jobs as well as they do because I don't do them. I'll also tell people I don't need any help being stupid. So I appreciate the opportunity to meet with town staff to bounce things off because if I don't, I'm going to come in front of you and frankly, your worship and council, I'm going to tell you stuff that may be wrong, and I'd like to avoid that. And once again, our expected completion date is late April. We initially talked about an April 30th timeframe for completion. We're not going to have an issue hitting this timeframe. So, your worship, members of council, that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Councillor Kylie?
Yes, Oscar. This review is going to be sort of a balanced approach to what's working and what is successful and how we can build on those successes, as well as opportunities to, it's not the, the old banking review where the auditors come in and say, we're here to help and then beat you with the baseball bat for a week.
Through you, your worship, we have every intention of highlighting the good, the bad. And I hope, council, you got a bit of a flavor of that for today in terms of how we deal with this. And once again, there's nothing, there's nothing so perfect it cannot be improved. There will be areas for change, but there's some things that frankly, you do very well. And I think it's, I think this is a good opportunity to emphasize those.
I think this approach too will allow the public to know what we're really doing down here and what's working and what we can improve on, and that's what we're hoping.
Through, through you, your worship, your public may not necessarily be happy with our position on certain things. But, you know, it's, it is what it is. As I've, you know, if you, if you imagine you have a $11 million municipal levy, about a million and a half of that is wastewater. So if I pull the wastewater out of that, I've got a nine and a half municipal levy, million dollars. Not a lot of municipalities your size have levies nine and a half million dollars. And they're not that they're lower, they're higher, right? And I think that reflects the cost-effectiveness of this community. So, to your point, councillor Kylie, yeah, this is a good chance to educate them. This is a good chance to opportune, but our comment may be, there's a cost to the services that you provide. There's a value to the services that you provide, and in some cases, you need to raise money in advance of when you need to spend it in order to be able to build up with it. So from a public perspective, you know, what's going to be interesting is the reaction to some of these responses because what they may end up having is costing the municipality more, not less, if council ultimately chooses to go through with it. And, you know, your taxpayers, if they're like everybody else I've dealt with, they're reasonable people. Don't be afraid to put that out there and to see what comes from it. So, I hope that answers the question. But to your point, councillor- But to your point, counselor, we are trying to be exceptionally balanced. We report the good, we report the bad, you know, and there's, and frankly, there's some stuff that we've actually learned from your staff. And I've been doing this for twenty-five years, and some of the messages I heard this morning, actually, my comment was, can you send me the letter? Because I want to see it for myself. So it's, it's been a good process to date.
Counselor Mino.
Oscar, you were talking about passing on to future generations or, you know, decisions of future councils. One of the things that I'm sort of looking at is the succession plan. And that seems to be pretty evident in our municipality. We have various degrees of different age level people, but there's a, there's certain departments that have more succession involved in the next few years, and, but they might overlap our council's sort of mandate. Is that going to be reflected in the report under a separate item, or is it going to be just built into the suggestions that you have?
Through you, your worship, your municipality already does succession planning. So we've had the opportunity through your C A O to achieve, to get some of those right now. One of the things that we have asked for and we've received is a listing of all the municipal employees, and frankly, information that will allow us to calculate when they can retire. And so the question then becomes one of, if I've got an attrition profile, for lack of a better term, when people retire, what's the opportunity for that? And so we did one for a municipality, admittedly a small municipality, that had three public works operators, that were all going to retire at the same time. And so, and soon. And the question was, do you replace them or do you contract? So it gives you opportunities there. When I talk about risk mitigation, council, one of the big risks that municipalities have, particularly in Northern Ontario, and particularly smaller centers, is they can't get the people they need with the requisite skills, right? You will see that with respect to water treatment. There's a reason why Aqua is prevalent in Northern Ontario, is because small communities can't get operators of records. They get operators in training, and then once they train, they go move someplace else, right? Chief building officers are the same thing. But at the same time, you know, I mentioned firing your clerk at the last meeting, so I'll give her a plug this meeting, you know, good clerks are hard to find. Good treasurers are hard to find, particularly in communities where there's a lot of competition. So succession planning is something that we're going to identify specifically from the standpoint of, these are your key positions, this is what the attrition profile looks like, and if you don't have a succession plan in right, place right now, you're going to want to consider doing it. But as I've mentioned, your municipality is already looking at this, and, and kudos to your staff for doing so, because not a lot of places do. And sorry, through you, your worship, if I may, I want to remind council that there's actually going to be two reports. There'll be a public report that's open session, and then there'll be a closed session report that deals with labor relation matters and identifiable individuals, where we're looking at attrition planning and succession planning, because it deals with personal information concerning when employees could potentially retire. We will be disclosing that in closed session. So just because it's not in the public report doesn't mean we're not talking about it. And then, you know, people are free to file Freedom of Information requests if they'd like to see the report, and then you'll have to deal with it through your clerk.
Okay, Oscar, thank you very much for the preliminary update. From everything I've been hearing, your crew has been here, they've been very sensitive to the fact that our employees are busy during the day as well. So we want to thank you for, for doing what you're doing in the least amount of disruption as possible.
Thank you, your worship. Hopefully that stays the case, but you know, these are, these have to be interactive processes, because otherwise, like I said, somebody from the outside isn't going to understand your operations as well as your staff. If you don't engage them, then frankly, council, you're wasting your money. So we'd like to thank you for the opportunity. It's the level of cooperation that we've received so far has been good, very good. I'm very happy with it. It'll be interesting when you get into the opportunity identified, identification is generally when people speak their minds, but it's been, it's been very good. We're very appreciative of the cooperation we receive from your staff. These are tough, and, and I will tell you, at some of the meetings, people have shown up with lists of what they do, right? And these are, these are my jobs, and this is what I do for a living. And in some respects, it's because they want to share the information, and I have a sneaky suspicion that in some respects, it's because they want to justify their position, because they're nervous about the intent. That is not the intent, and, and generally speaking, we start every meeting by saying, we don't have a target for savings, we don't have a target for cost reductions, we don't have a target for staff reductions. This is an exercise of kicking the tires and making sure that you're operating effective and efficient. And we haven't been directed by council for that, and we haven't. So that's how we start every meeting. These are, these are interesting processes for people, and I've been on the receiving end of one or two of these, and you know, my neck hairs sometime go up as well, so it's understandable. So, your worship, thank you. We will see you again in a couple of weeks to provide another status update while we're here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and we look forward to your return. Okay, we have the acceptance of the minutes. It was moved by Counselor Kylie and seconded by Counselor Morgan. That council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The Museum Advisory Board meeting held January twentieth, two thousand and sixteen. The Kirkland Lake Public Library Board held January twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen. And the regular meeting of council held February sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen. All in favor? Thank you. Reports of municipal officers and communications. Nancy, you're going to speak too.
This is just the annual report that we do at this time of year. This is regarding the two thousand and fifteen summary of allowances and travel for council members. It has a ver and council fees and allowances, benefits, travel, and conferences. Also has police commission fees and allowances, which were reduced this year somewhat, and also the service board's fees and allowance. Is there any question about any of the fees or allowances?
Okay, a resolution was moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Kylie. That council accepts the two thousand and fifteen summary of allowances and travel for council members, as presented by the chief administrative officer. All in favor? Okay, we have, Norm, you're going to speak to, speak on the resolutions concerning the gas prices.
Yeah, last week, or no, last, last meeting, I brought forward a notice of motion and through our clerk, Joanne, the motion that I'm asking council to support tonight is asking the provincial government to get involved into assigning the Ontario Energy Board the powers to regulate the gas prices on a weekly basis throughout the province. This practice is already done in five provinces in this country. And the reason that obviously I'm asking it this way is because you, although we've been having this disparity for about two, three years now, whereby we're extremely high in terms of per liter cost, until recently, I think I still believe in the heart's still about eighty-seven or eighty-nine, and we're still at ninety-five. And this is within half an hour's drive. And so to me, it's, it's, there's a disparity there that's not being dealt with, and it's not to lay a blame on anybody, because competition is a hard sort of animal to, to track. But the, the resolution is asking to, to get the province involved. So in, I know Charlie Angus is actually having some letters sent, and his angle is that he's going to see if the Competition Bureau could be sort of more or less get involved, because he might think that there's something going on in terms of maybe price fixing and stuff like that. But I would support that as well, too, because it's, it's just another avenue to explore why, why in Kirkland Lake are we paying more money for gas? It doesn't make sense to me. There's four gas stations in this town. Every time gas goes down or up, all four go up or all four go down. So that's a pattern that we've all noticed. However, we don't have any formal mechanism to challenge that, and this is, this resolution would probably do that. It might not go all the way, but it certainly is raising an awareness. I'm thinking, I'm looking at the federal websites, and they have four factors that influence the gas prices. The first one is taxes. When I look at the taxes from Timmins, North Bay, Thunder Bay, and Valdor, they're all within a penny per liter in terms of the taxes. So in other words, in Timmins, if they're paying thirty-five point nine cents per liter of tax, we in Kirkland Lake may be paying thirty-five point seven, or vice versa, in North Bay. Yet, look at the disparity in prices anyways. So we can actually remove the tax factor as, as a sort of influence. The second one they talk about is competition and consumer choice. Well, that one is mostly a city-driven sort of analogy, not analogy, but a factor, because what happens, obviously, in the city, you've got maybe areas where there's twenty-five gas stations in, within one kilometer. Here, we only have four. So it's a little hard to, to use that one as, as an explanation as to why our prices are higher. We're, we're twenty minutes away from, we're twenty minutes away from, what is it, Canongi there? And they have a gas station there, and their prices are lower than us, too, and that's not a city at all. So to me, I question that one. Then they talk about amount of fuel sold. Well, Kirkland Lake still has a population of about ten thousand people, to my knowledge, and there's an awful lot of traffic going through. Here we are, Trans-Canada Highway. So the fuel sold here could possibly be measured in terms of equal or higher than people who have lower gas prices than us, too. So I'm, I'm also questioning that factor. And the, the last one is the type and location of gas stations that they're suggesting. They're saying that while gas stations are now diversifying their services, and they're getting into more snacks and lottery terminals and so on, well, all four of ours already have those things, too. So when I look at the governments, or the federal governments, sort of explanation as to why gas prices kind of vary, I, I can't pinpoint one here. Maybe the, the local retailers could actually maybe set us straight. They're more than welcome to address it through us or through staff. I, I'd like to hear that, that side of the things, because sometimes we don't have the whole story. And so if, if they had something to do with perhaps a Chamber of Commerce in terms of understanding why I'm bringing this up, or why I'm asking for support, is because if we're going to get into the sports tourism and the tourism strategy, which is we've identified now, and this looks like a vision of the future here, it's pretty hard for me to, to, to tell somebody that's coming down the highway to come over here, at least we have, you know, a competitive gas price. We don't. We really don't. When you're talking eight cents a liter, and the average gas tank puts in eighty liters in a gas tank, you're talking between six and ten dollars on average for a fill-up. That's a big difference. Like I said before, for ten bucks, maybe somebody's going to say, oh, I'll drive to Lisker, I'll drive to Ruon, and I'll even make it to Timmins. And so what? So I'll come back, I'll have spent my gas money, yes, but I will have enjoyed a shopping experience outside of my own town limits. So in, in that, in that sense, it, it creates that potential, doesn't mean it's going to happen, but it's there. But also, if you, if you're like me, if you walk around Tim Horton, and you ask people in the Tim Horton shop, they're all on the same sort of speaking terms. They're all like upset that the gas prices are higher, and there, there's some of them saying, why are we second-class citizens here? Like, what's, what's going on? And they don't have the answer, and neither do I. So my, my partial solution to this is to actually petition the, the province to get involved in the Ontario Energy Board to perhaps give us some kind of fairness. You know, we always talk about Northern Ontario getting the shaft. Well, here's a perfect example again. Northern Ontario is taking it right on the nose, and the prices are fluctuating and not in our favor, to tell you right now. So I'm sure I'm not telling you anything new here. So basically, this, this resolution is, is asking for the government to consider giving the Ontario Energy Board the mandate to actually fix the gas prices, or at least control the disparity that's going on.
Okay, I have a resolution in front of me. It's a lengthy one, so please bear with me. I'll read it. It was moved by Counselor Kylie and seconded by Counselor Morgan. Whereas the pump price of a liter of gasoline in Kirkland Lake and other parts of Northern Ontario can be as high as thirty percent or more than Southern Ontario. And whereas the pump price for a liter of gasoline in Kirkland Lake can be as high as eight to fifteen cents higher than other towns in the Cochrane and Timiscoming districts. And whereas the high gas price of gasoline in Kirkland Lake is making desirous for residents to travel out of town to gas up and shop in other regions, causing an economic hardship for the businesses of the town of Kirkland Lake. And whereas while the Ontario government can't change international oil prices, it can eliminate gouging and provide consumers with predictable and fairness. And whereas the Ontario Energy Board already regulates the price of natural gas, be it resolved that the council of the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake requests that the Ontario Energy Board be given the power by the province of Ontario to impose a weekly ceiling on gas prices in order to reduce volat- volat- volatility and regional price differences while encouraging competition. And further, that this motion be sent to M P Charlie Angus, M P P John Vantoff, A M O, and Phenom. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, we have, Joanne, you're going to speak to a parade permit?
Okay, this is a request from the Holy Name Parish. They're doing their annual Way of the Cross, Public Way of the Cross on Friday, March twenty-fifth. It begins at eleven A M. and goes to one, one P M. And it goes, stop, makes fourteen stops on the way from Holy Name Parish to Assumption. So they're just requesting a parade permit.
Okay, I have a resolution. It was moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Kylie. That council approves the request for Holy Name Parish for a parade permit for the public Way of the Cross to be held on Friday, March twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, Kirkland Lake, one hundredth anniversary. Wolf, you're going to come up to speak on that?
I put before you a report to council regarding the hundredth anniversary that will be occurring in two thousand and nineteen. To date, we have not seen a coordinated community organization taking the, the reins on this particular project, but it is a big project. So what I would like to suggest is that council appoint a committee, once we have a better idea of who may be out there interested in participating, what kind of things they want to do, et cetera, and I would bring that back to you. I am not recommending that this committee be the arbitrator of what happens, what doesn't happen. I'm suggesting that the committee represent the community to council and council to the community, because council will be the core agency that can represent the community to other levels of government, and we will be applying for assistance. As well, it is a good practice that you have an official stamp of approval on activities that are going on. That way, there, everybody knows that, what the others are doing, and it's just a better functioning structure. I have also put in there, and I have raised this during the budget deliberations, that a reserve be established and paid into for the next three years to support one hundred anniversary activities. I listened to the various counselors. I put in twenty thousand dollars as a recommendation. I leave that to council to determine what the, the correct amount would be. My suggestion would be that the money that goes into that reserve be used to leverage other money as we go up to two thousand and nineteen. So one obvious one is that we would be using the town money to get funding applications in, and hopefully on a fifty, fifty percentage basis, or seventy-five percent basis, we try to get more money for the money that we put in. But I would also suggest that council consider using that seed money to help other community groups do fundraising, et cetera, to, to make money, to enable them to do something during the anniversary. So if somebody wants to hold a, example, wine and cheese as a fundraiser for an event that, or an activity that they want to do in two thousand and nineteen, the municipal pot of money is there. It can be used to get the event up going, make it successful, but we recoup that money again, so that when two thousand and nineteen comes, we actually have the money in the bank to leverage for other funding opportunities. It's just a suggestion. I would hope that it works well. Obviously, we would want council representation on that committee as well.
Counselor Morgan.
Certainly, I'm, I'm in favor of this. We've, through our economic development- Certainly, I'm, I'm in favor of this. We've, through our Economic Development Committee, we've already realized that, you know, there's, there's some projects that are starting to surface to do with the two thousand and nineteen, and I think it's timely that, that we start to help get that organization to, to, together. And I think this is, you know, an excellent foundation to help, as Wolf says, fund and also to leverage other dollars. So, it's, I mean, it may seem like a long way off, but time flies.
Councillor Mino?
I fully support this recommendation. Wolf, we have to take leadership here. This is a pretty significant landmark in our sort of history. And so, when you look at it from the financial point of view, it's like point two of a percent in terms of our tax sort of implications to build that reserve. The other thing is, obviously, in two thousand and nineteen, this council will not be at the table. So, we, we are kind of setting the table for the next council to actually perhaps, maybe not necessarily enjoy it, but certainly have funds at that time instead of making a rash decision or, you know, last-minute decision to try and secure some funds. So, it's, it's, it's good planning and it's good use of the money. And I, I like your idea about, obviously, using it as a sort of a loan for those people who are going to take on these projects. It might stimulate some interest and might create a little bit more interest in terms of what the significance of this thing means. So, yeah, for sure, I would be supporting this.
Okay, yeah, certainly, two thousand and nineteen isn't very far off. It'll be here before we know it. Hundredth anniversary, it's the only one anybody still up Kirkland Lake. It's the only one we'll see. And like I say, it'll be here shortly. I have two resolutions. The first resolution is to, is for the, to go out for the establishment of an organizing committee. And with that, I certainly urge the community to put their names forward. We have a, a lot of expertise from different events that we've had, different reunions, so we can draw on a lot of expertise there. And I, again, I encourage the community to step forward. So, I'll, I'll read the first resolution, and it's concerning the organizing of the committee. It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Morgan. That council directs the Director of Economic Development and Tourism to proceed with organizing that committee to oversee the planning of Kirkland Lake's one hundredth anniversary in two thousand and nineteen. All in favor? Thank you. And the next resolution speaks to the, the twenty thousand dollars putting away. I, I think we owe it to the future councils to do this. And the resolution, it was moved by councillor Morgan, seconded by councillor Kylie. That council approves the Director of Economic Development and Tourism to budget twenty thousand per year from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and nineteen for expenses surrounding Kirkland Lake's one hundredth anniversary. All in favor? Thank you. Thanks, Wolf. Okay, we have the introduction, reading and consideration of bylaws. This first bylaw is, is to remove the library from our user fees. The reason we're doing that is because the library operates under the Library Act, and they set their own, their own fees and rates. So, I have a resolution here. It was moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Morgan. That bylaw sixteen dash zero two zero being a bylaw to amend by law fifteen dash one twenty-one, listing the town's two thousand and sixteen user fees by removing the tech centennial library fees. Be read a first, second, third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Thank you. The next bylaw is concerning the, the sale of sixty Government Road West, which is the, we would know it better as the Franklin Tavern. It was moved by councillor Morgan, seconded by councillor Kylie. That bylaw sixteen dash zero two one being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute all documents related to the sale of sixty Government Road West. Be read a first, second and third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Thank you. Notices of motion.
At the next meeting, I'd like to bring forth a motion that will move the April nineteenth meeting of council to April twenty-sixth. And the reason for this is because the two thousand and sixteen budget will be ready to be passed. And moving it to the twenty-sixth will allow for both the finance chair and the CEO to be present at that time. So, I'll bring that next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Confirmation bylaw. It was moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Morgan. That count, that bylaw sixteen dash zero two two being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its regular meeting held March first, two thousand and sixteen. Be read a first, second and third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Thank you. Councillors' reports. Councillor Mino?
I'm sure you're gonna do it, but obviously, the carnival was a success. I'd just like to highlight Tom Barker's performance at the Cabaret. I was impressed and congratulations on the job. Well done. And of course, that's one of many events that went over really well. And once again, the Festivals Committee and the carnival and all the other activities that go around town are a good sign of our tourism strategy and bode very well with that going forward. The other thing is, you probably read in the newspaper about the DSAB budget. And so, what happened at that point in time, in order for the, the DSAB to arrive at a sort of a less impact on municipalities in their budget, there was a motion, there was two scenarios. And one of the motions that was adopted was the three hundred thousand dollar withdrawal reserves scenario to reduce this impact on municipalities. That gave us, I believe, one percent less in terms of our municipality's share. So, we will have a slight decrease in terms of our DSAB share for this year, two thousand and sixteen. I voted against that motion because I thought we could draw more. I had actually suggested half a million. And the reason I'm going on that sort of topic tonight is because the DSAB has, in my opinion, a share of reserves that are a little bit high, and those reserves have been there for many, many years. They were generated by the municipalities all along via some surpluses, I suppose, and other more efficient, perhaps, management of some of the budgets. But they're sitting there, and there's, well, I think, I believe, on, on December thirty-first, there was like three point nine seven one million in the working capital. There's other reserves, mind you, but this is the one I'm actually focusing on. And having taken three hundred thousand for this year's budget on that, there's still gonna be about three five, three six, give or take. And so, councillor Morgan and I voted to, against this motion. And however, we were assured by the CAO that the review, there will be a review of the reserves done in June. So, I'm looking forward to actually perhaps get the municipalities to speak to this collectively through the, either TMA or, or through another sort of network of letters, and to see what would be their impression as to how we should deal with some of these reserves, how could it be better reserved to the municipalities? Because like anybody else, we like it better in our bank account than theirs, right? And so, because I'm wearing the two hats here, my, my feeling is to speak for Kirkland Lake here on this one, because I know the reserves are comfortable, and I would like to see that pursued further. So, we'll keep you posted as we go.
Thank you. Councillor Morgan?
If I could just speak to, to Norm's first, I, I agree completely with Norm. The, the DSAB budget is, is a very predictable budget. It doesn't fluctuate a lot. To have three point eight five million dollars in capital or in reserves like that is excessive. And those, those monies should definitely be put into the, back into the hands of the municipalities who can all, you know, deal with them in their own more appropriate way. And, and the mayor was there as well and spoke to the, to the issue. So, I think the review in June gives us time to, to speak to our friends and colleagues at the other municipalities and gauge their support and understanding of where those monies came from and how they should be dealt with. And I would encourage everyone to, to, to do that. So, so that, that's all I wanted to say about the, the DSAB budget. Can I also speak to another item, or did somebody else have their hand up first?
Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to report to council and to the municipality. Mark Williams and I attended the Good Roads Rural Ontario Municipal Conference last week. It was a, again, an excellent opportunity for us to arm twist with the various ministries of the provincial government and also to, you know, an educational, educational experience for both of us on, on, on multiple levels. And I'll just sort of outline a few highlights here as to what we accomplished on our trip. Mark was able to attend the Save Our Arena event. I was not. But from that event, we realized that a lot of municipalities are in exactly the same boat. They're looking for sustainable, long-term funding for not only arenas but pools. So, there's been a working group forum to, of different municipalities to get on that and to lobby senior levels of government that these things really, in today's day and age, are not optional anymore, and they become part of our, our municipal fabric and need to be appropriately funded. So, certainly, I don't know that that's gonna, you know, that white, white horse is gonna come riding in for us and our pool, but it certainly doesn't hurt that, you know, we're supportive of, of things like that. We were able to meet with three different ministries. We met with the Ministry of Labor, Ministry of Infrastructure and Ministry of Northern Development and Mines. We spoke to Labor about the interest arbitration scenario. This is obviously a lightning point for a lot of municipalities. This came up multiple times during the Minister's Forum. It's very unusual for the Ministry of Labor to get dragged into these types of events, but this is becoming a serious issue for municipalities where they're getting arbitration settlements foisted onto them that are crippling their, their books. And so, this, we're not alone in this fight and, or concern, rather, if you will. So, that, we brought that message loud and clear. You know, the arbitrators are simply not taking into account the ability for rural municipalities and their ability to pay. Ministry of Infrastructure, obviously, we were hitting hard on them to do with our Swastika sewage treatment plant and the, the option of running a sewer line back and eliminating the, the, the plant in Swastika. Obviously, as usual with Kirkland Lake, we, we took a very different spin to this because it has significant economic development and tourism aspects to it. By eliminating the sewage treatment plant in Swastika, we're now gonna be servicing the entire corridor between Kirkland Lake and Swastika with sewer, which is not currently serviced. But also, it will afford us the opportunity of, of redeveloping our beach at Culver Park and certainly will, you know, just make everybody more comfortable with using it going forward. So, that, we were actually successful in, in tweaking the ministry's realization that the current OSIF application setup is not taking into account projects that have further-reaching benefits. They were really just focused on, you know, just replacing roads, replacing sewers, that's, that type of thing. And they weren't really looking at the big picture. And there was another municipality that came forward with almost a very similar situation to us where a little bit of infrastructure money was gonna pay huge dividends in other areas. So, now they're looking at potentially either expanding it or looking at creating a separate pot of money for more involved projects. So, you know, no check coming out of that meeting, but we certainly tweaked their interest in, in, in looking at things like this in more detail. The next meeting was Ministry of Northern Development and Mines. We always get a good audience with Mr. Gravel. And again, we brought to him, you know, economic development issues as well as, you know, the potential for this sewage project and how it interreacts with both tourism and, and economic development. So, not typically a ministry we would approach for this type of a, a project. But you know what? We got a, we got a receptive audience in that meeting. So, keep our fingers crossed. At the meeting, as most of us know by now, there was some funding announcements that obviously impact on us. The Ontario Community Infrastructure Funding has been increased from a hundred to two hundred to three hundred million dollars over the next number of years. Connecting Link has been increased from fifteen to thirty million dollars. Still not a, a realistic number, in my opinion, for all the Connecting Link issues in Ontario. But you know what? It's better than, than nothing, better than the fifteen million that was there originally. I mean, my God, we know communities ourselves that could use up all that fifteen million just in one fell swoop. So, anyways... And we were also able to pick a few brains and satisfy, you know, a bit of a learning experience for Mark and I on certain infrastructure issues and components because that's obviously what a lot of this conference is geared to. So, we know that, for example, the, some of the solutions for Goodfish Road that are being proposed to us are, are reasonable and, and functional. And so, that, I think, went a long way to making Mark a little more comfortable. So, anyways, all in all, I think it was a well, you know, well-attended event, and certainly was worth our while to go down. So, I hope, if anybody has any questions, be more than happy to, to answer them.
Questions? Oh, well, just want to mention, I want to thank councillor Morgan and Mark Williams for representing the, the community at Ontario Good Roads. Certainly, a busy, a busy three days, and I'm sure you did the community proud. Thank you very much for doing that. Councillor Shamyard?
Yeah, I'd like to come back on Norm on the carnival. It was, I mean, the festival committee is something we have in town that's unbelievable. We're so lucky. It was three weekends, sixteen days. Those poor guys, they work hard. Juliana Group were involved in everything. And a lot of group also joined in, so I just want to mention a few. Tom, I wouldn't mention, not Tom, sorry. Norm, I wouldn't mention the Cabaret, which is awesome. I went to the, it was organized by Club Richardure, which is a French group, and they had the wine and beer tasting. Lots of people weren't sure where they were going, but at the end of the day, it was a huge success. It was just so nice. There was sommelier from Kingston, Belleville region, and there was a brewmaster from Timmins, and they explained to us how it goes with the meal. And chef, Anthony Delpay, yeah. Unbelievable meal. It was something next year will be really, they almost sold out, and next year, I'm sure they'll sell out because it was really popular. Another really big, big thing now is the Fisher Beer. It's unbelievable. I think they had five hundred tickets this year, Bonnie, yeah. And it was, I think they sold out to it, yeah. There was people from northwestern Quebec and northeastern Ontario from all over the place. And there was, there were so many people I didn't know, and it was so well organized. And there was six big winners this year. And the winners were all different people. Some from Quebec, some from out of town, some from in town, some town workers. So, it was, I mean, it's, I don't know if they could do better. I mean, every year, they seem to be getting better and better. And I just want to raise my hat and say thank you very much.
Councillor Kylie?
Yes, just a couple of comments on the budget process. We got out of the gate fairly early this year compared to last year, and we're well on our way. We've done the budget deliberations, and they've gone back to the directors to fine-tune further. So, we're looking at March the tenth, or fifteenth, I'm sorry, March fifteenth for them to do their presentation here to council. And also, that'll be an open public meeting. So, April the twenty-sixth, as you mentioned, Joanne, will be the final presentation to council. So, that'll give us council and the, for discussion, a little more opportunity than, and timing-wise than, than we had last year. It was kind of rushed through. I know there wasn't, there wasn't too much time in between that we had to deliberate. So, this will give us everybody ample, ample opportunity to provide further input or address any concerns. So... any concerns. So, uh, the directors have done a good job so far. We're well on our way.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I had the opportunity as well to attend, uh, several events. Uh, I, I did attend the, on behalf of the town, I did attend the, uh, the South Theatre Twenty-Four Hour Play, uh, uh, playwright, uh, contest. And, uh, it was held at KLDCS. And I, I was very pleased to see the number of young men and women who, uh, who, uh, took to that skill, uh, wrote skits over twenty-four hours and, uh, and in most cases presented them as a short skit. Uh, and on behalf of council, I, I encourage these young men and women to, uh, continue, uh, to, uh, grow in their writing skills. And, uh, so this was certainly another great event at the carnival. Uh, kudos to the Kirkland Lake Festivals Committee, uh, the many, many, many volunteers, uh, who are out there, uh, eighteen days of fun-packed time. And, uh, certainly, uh, wanna thank all the, the participants for coming out as well. Uh, so thank you, uh, to the Kirkland Lake Festivals Committee as well for, for that. Uh, we have our adjournment. It was moved by councillor Morgan and seconded by councillor Barker. That council adjourn its regular meeting on March first, two thousand and sixteen. All in favor? Thank you.